So I would like to call the September 6, 2024 called board meeting and work session to order at 1:02 PM. Dr. Thomas, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
Oh, yes, Chairman Plow, we will go into executive session after we preview the incentive agenda before we adjourn.
All right, so we'll add that as item five and the adjournment will be item six. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, the agenda is approved. Action items, final approval of our 2024 milage rate, so Dr. Thomas and I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, great, well, I'll turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Amy Smith. Today is will be our final formal approval of our milage for the upcoming year, so, Smith, take it away.
We're pleased to bring our 2024 milage recommendations to the board for final approval. Just to remind you of a couple things, this is a reduction from the milage from 2023 from 12.4 mils to 12.2 mils. It does go beyond the rollback rate, which means it's technically not a tax increase, so we do not have to do the additional through meetings and required advertising for those. We have completed the requirements to post it on our website and to run it in the local organ for a week and have documented that. This will not produce all the revenue that we need, as y'all know, and just to let everybody know, we do plan, we have adjusted our budget for FY '25 to reflect that we will potentially be digging into our fund balance by approximately $4 million. So when we bring the budget for final approval next week at the regular board meeting, we have, we will have adjusted those numbers, so just, and you'll get that information in your board packet. Do y'all have any questions? Dr. Thomas, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yes, our recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is that we set our new milage rate at 12.20. That's the recommendation we're making.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the FY '24 milage rate at 12.2 mils as presented?
So moved.
Does that hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right. All right, Dr. Thomas, I'll turn it back to you, so we're moving to our work session items.
Okay, this time we'll turn it over to our work session items and our first goal area in our strategic plan is student achievement and success, and with us this afternoon is Ms. Chris Parker, our CTAE director, and Ms. Parker will be sharing the CTAE local plan for the upcoming school year, so we'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for letting me come and talk about our local plan for CTAE. Essentially, this is just a review of the different grants that we applied that were back in the spring and have been awarded, and we want to make sure that you know what the amounts that we've been awarded, what those grants can be used for, and ask you to accept those grant funds. In addition to that, I'll talk a little bit about where we are with CTAE and some specific data there. So to begin with, there are some mandated activities that are included with our local plan in terms of what we have to use these funds for, and I have listed those here, things like strengthening academic and technical skills of our students, providing experience in and understanding of the different businesses and industries, expanding the use of technology, delivering relevant professional development to the instructors within our CTAE department, and also evaluating the needs of our special populations through these grant funds. This is just a one-year funding application, so this is something that, as most of you know, we repeat year after year. And so I'll start with our Perkins Five, Perkins Plus grant. We have been awarded $10,700 with this grant. It's designed to supplement the resources of local school systems in rural areas, so not all school systems qualify to apply for this grant, but we do. And we can use these grant funds to help fund our end-of-pathway assessments, specifically the tests. Also, these funds can be used to help with the administration of those tests, and then also we can buy some study materials where they're available for the different tests that we offer to our students. The next grant that I want to highlight is the Perkins Program Improvement Grant. This is one of our larger grants, and for FY '25, we've been awarded $42,346. And these have to be budgeted for different activities to improve and enhance our CTA program, so they can't be used for any type of program maintenance, they have to be used to make the programs better and to improve and enhance those. And so specifically, those dollars will go to things like equipment and machinery, they'll go for professional development for our teachers and for travel to those professional development We get several different ag grants each year, and we've been awarded some different grants again this year. The first one is the Ag Extended Day Grant. This is for our three agriculture teachers. We received or have been awarded, rather, $22,721 for extended day. This provides for salary for one additional work hour a day for each of those three ag teachers. And then they also, we've also been awarded extended year money in the amount of $19,725, and this goes for an additional 40 days of work each school year. And this is so that those three ag teachers can fulfill the responsibilities in their program of work. We also have been awarded $72,715 for our young farmer, and this money has to go only for, we have to allocate it for at least 70% of the instructor's salary and benefits, and it has to be, of course, based on the state-based teacher pay scale, and the remaining 30% has to be contributed by our local school system. We've also been awarded $10,806 for our CTAE Extended Day Grant. This is separate from our ag teachers, so this year we have four teachers who will be receiving extended day monies in CTAE from this grant. Specifically, that will go for those teachers to be advisors of these four career tech student organizations, CTI, which is our Career Technical Instruction Program, FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, HOSA, which is our Future Healthcare Professionals, and then Skills USA. The CTAE Supervision Grant, for this grant, we were awarded $14,442, and this is to provide leadership for the CTAE program, and this goes directly toward the CTAE director's salary. We've also been awarded the Youth Apprenticeship Grant in the amount of $18,750. This has to be budgeted to support the Youth Apprenticeship Program. Youth Apprenticeship is a part of our work-based learning program, it's a specific designation under that program, and no less than 85% of this grant can be, has to be used towards the payment of the coordinator's salary. All right, that concludes the federal and state grants that we've been awarded for CTAEs, but I did want to just share with you some information about CTAE in general, and these are the different pathways and programs that we offer at Pickens High School. This does not include any of the CTA programs at our junior high or even elementary level, but we are very proud of the scope and how many programs we're able to offer here in Pickens County, and it really is pretty large in comparison to some schools that are our size, and that's something that we're really proud of. These are just some numbers that I feel that are important for people to know about CTAE. We offer courses in 10 different career clusters identified by the Georgia Department of Education, and that boils down to 14 different specific pathways that we offer, and 41 different courses that students are able to take this school year in the area of CTAE. We now have 15 instructors in the Department of CTAE. Our largest program, obviously, is agriculture. Our most requested pathway remains culinary arts. Unfortunately, we just cannot get everybody who wants to be in that program in there, but our program that has the highest enrollment is, again, Childhood Education. What is a pathway completer? I certainly am not trying to insult anybody's intelligence by speaking about this, but in case you don't know, being a pathway completer means that students complete a sequence of three courses in a particular program area, and if they do that successfully, then they become a pathway completer. In FY '24, last school year, for all grade levels combined, we had 243 pathway completers. The class of 2024, 69% of them were pathway complete, CTAE pathway completers. And then I just thought it was interesting that we looked at how many completed more than one pathway, and so 24% of the class of 2024 completed more than one pathway. What is a credential of value? A credential of value is an interchangeable term with what we call an EOPA, which is an end-of-pathway assessment, so those terms can be used interchangeably and are used interchangeably by the Georgia Department of Education, and so the industry, they are an industry-recognized credential. So the Georgia DOE has identified a credential that aligns with every program area in CTAE, and the students, when they become a pathway completer, are tested, and if they pass that end-of-pathway assessment, they can earn this industry credential. And so, of course, that's very important for our students, it gives them evidence and proof that they can put on resumes so that employers can see that they really have demonstrated proficiency in a particular program area when it comes to certain content knowledge and skills. So that, in our mind and in the mind of the state of Georgia, gives our students a competitive advantage and should be a signal to our employers that students are ready to enter the workforce and that they have a good foundational knowledge in a particular program area. Some of those industry-recognized credentials are more widely recognized than others, but the Georgia DOE has tried to identify some type of industry credential for each of those program areas. In last school year, we had 141 students who were able to pass an end-of-pathway assessment and earn their credential of value.
Very good.
So that concludes my presentation, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
In addition to the CTAE program, we still have over 300 dual-enrollment kids?
I don't know the specific number of dual enrollment students, do you know, Mr. Combs?
I just got the updated, we're like 190 kids taking over 300 courses, okay?
I thought it was 190, 191, the last I heard, but I wanted to be certain.
I believe that's over double what it was this year.
Correct. And I do believe, and you can correct me, Mr. Combs, if I'm wrong here, we have made the shift where the majority of those are now CTAE instead of academic courses, which is a significant achievement in my mind, and, you know, that's...
It's great partnership.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for thinking that you dealt with your leadership and, you know, not only just the program, but getting good people to be a part of that. It's just, it's great, and a lot of the students really need this.
We appreciate so sincerely the support that we get from our district administration and from you all as the Board of Education, because we could not do what we do and offer all these great options to our students in this district, so sincere thank you to each and every one of you.
One size doesn't fit all?
It does not.
That's great. Sounds like I speak for all of them, saying we know how hard to work at this and really have to empower this in our community.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Parker, what we'll do, we'll formally approve your plan at our regular board meeting on this Thursday.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Okay, next, our third goal area in our strategic plan is communication and engagement, and with us this afternoon is Matt Combs, Principal of Pickens High School, and Brandon Thomas, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director of Pickens High School. Mr. Combs and Mr. Thomas have been working towards better alignment with the branding for our system, and so at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Combs and Mr. Thomas.
Okay, I'm going to be really quick, kind of go right in line back to Dr. Thomas's vision about being the one school in North Georgia. A big part of that is the branding identity, creating an identity that is not only recognizable amongst 11 counties, but recognizable throughout the state, and I think that the second part of that is creating an identity that is ours and ours only, right? Where we're not sharing, there's no confusion of who, and then the last part of this is making sure that it's consistent, consistent across, because we understand we have a lot of vendors, we have a lot of people that are involved and a lot of players in the games, that when we're done with this, we want to be able to present a consistent file to all of our people that we understand that one thing's coming out, and that's a unified message. So you're going, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Thomas. I'm going to ask that if, if Mr. Thomas is going to talk, please show him, but no one's seen this yet, all right? This is the first time that the board's seen it, and the reason why we wanted you to see it first is because we understand that a lot of times the questions come to you first, so that we can give you the information, all right, and so that you have all the facts, all right? So that's kind of where we're going, so please do not show the picture yet. If I need to turn this TV off, do I need to turn this TV off so you can show Mr. Thomas? Is that possible?
Should be. You three, man.
Is that possible?
Coach Thomas, Steve, Momot over there.
He's probably going to be blocking most of it.
That's what, but, I mean...
So, well, that's weird then, so...
Well...
When are you showing?
We're going to show it after.
Fake news, no shit. I'm just kidding, it's fine, there you go.
Okay, keep clicking for me.
Yep, I'll click.
King of a remote.
All right, so I'm going to take my time and not rush and kind of give you some background. Last year, I was in the hallway with another coach, and we've been talking about branding for a long time, and we just did one class change, and we snapped all these pictures, kids walking by, I was like, hey, stop, and I snapped a picture, and this was just a variety of what we saw, and there's good and not good in this picture, the good is kids wear our stuff and we love it. We love to see kids wearing Pickens gear, Dragons gear, but what it's just a snapshot of is just a variety of branding that takes place in our school system, different colored greens, different dimensions to the pea, and you guys all know, when you have something that looks uniform, it just looks professional, just like your, every one of your nameplates all looks the same, the sign that's out on the building now, we see it all over the county on the sides, the cards, the logo for the county office, so that's the same mindset we brought into this concept. So some of the things that we saw or think is problem areas, we do have different colored greens floating around, we have different diamond peas, and I mean, that's the size of the letter inside or the shape, no official dragon, and that we've been able to understand kind of why, no visible unity across sports and schools, meaning each team can look different and how they apparel that they wear on the field, and then anytime we make an investment in like our new field house or something, we're putting investment into that, but if we're going to choose a design, and it's not the same with design in this facility, then we're just kind of maybe not investing that money as wisely as possible without a consistent brand. Go ahead. So we talked about how to do it, we thought about we could just do, we could go small, do it ourselves, we just make sure we're all using the same font, we decide on a color, we get the same diamond pea, and then we put all this on the Google Drive and we share it amongst staff, and that's easy to do, but it's not necessarily going to be hitting what it looks like around here in local one, or we can bring professionals, we're going with the professional route. So the reason we think that going to the professional is when you start to apply the different components of any kind of brand, and you put, and you spend money or you get funding for things to go around your school, it's going to look really good, these are some examples of branding being taken to walls, and you're using all the same components. Go ahead, Mr. Combs. And it can really dress up, and it can run a school together, kind of, instead of that picture that we saw, everybody kind of has a similar feel. So some benefits is, it's one look for all additions or renovations, guidance for our teams and school improvements, recognize Pickens brand from a distance, not just inside our county, but people that see our stuff from outside our county, and then just bring some more unity, so these were all some of the benefits of what we wanted to achieve with some brand. And this is very common, obviously collegiate programs, all brand, this is what a branding guide looks like for UGA, it tells you, this is the G that we use, these are the Bulldog mascots that we use, this is the only application of how you can use them on uniforms, on official gear. Now, there's a difference between official gear and then once you get made for homecoming or things like that, we're really focused on official gear, things that our teams wear, this is what Georgia would follow. I'll give you a high school example, anybody recognize what high school that would be?
Buford.
That's Buford, and you see, recognize the B, they're real standard with their B, they're standard with their green, you'll notice their colors, they are Kelly green too, but it's a little bit different than R. Kelly green, but those things and those codes are used for printers or digital media to know what color to use, you see it on their uniforms, they're going to be consistent across the board with what they use, and that's kind of what we're going for. Go ahead. So our challenge, and we know this was going to be something that people have opinions, is how do you pick a dragon when you don't really kind of have an official dragon, there's some different ones floating, these are all examples of high school dragons, there's one on there that we played in football a few weeks ago, you know which one it is?
Lower middle.
Lower middle, the red one, that's Pepperell's dragon.
I remember those Pepperells, baseball uniforms?
I have none.
They're not black and gold, they're red.
There you go. So that Cooper one is a school in Texas that did a rebrand recently, these are other, just a hot spot, just where you can go with a dragon, we understand the challenge of people all being excited about the dragon that we're going to have, it's going to be a work in progress, but yeah, have to make a decision, move on, go ahead, Mr. Combs. Just some more examples of dragons, that bottom left one, with the H is an old dragon logo, and the school took the time to rebrand, and that's what they chose above that, it's just an example of how difficult it can be to come up with a dragon now that, anybody recognize the green one there?
That's Blade.
That's UAB, University of Alabama firsthand, people borrow that one all the time, which is not technically correct, it's a trademark dragon, and this dragon is one I've seen around Pickens over the years in different shapes and sizes, this one's used at other schools as well, those two particular high schools use that dragon, one of them uses it with purple, which I found really weird, in that we've used it with green before, and you know, purple's just not a good thing around here, so, but... So anyway, you get a first look at what we came up with, we'll show you the branding suite, we'll do it a little digitally for some pop, I think I got a little video for the first pop part. So this is our font and our one-colored dragon, that's going to be a green white, go ahead, but we also have a word mark, and with this word mark, we tried to incorporate mountains as an aspect of our community, go ahead and go down. You'll see that we basically kind of emphasized a little bit of sharp top there in the middle, even though we know there's more to that mountain range, that's kind of the park that stands out behind our school, so we wanted that to be visible, we wanted angles in the font to kind of match the angles in the mountains, we wanted a one-colored dragon on the left where we could use just the head or the head and neck, and then a three-color if you wanted something with a little bit more pop on the right, and this is a, different components that can be used in different combinations of things digitally, on letterhead if you wanted to at the high school level, and the branding guide will have all of this different items, we also have a shield on the bottom left, it adds another thing that incorporates the dragon and the mountains together. Obviously, the diamond pea is on all of our things, on a lot of our things, but one thing about this particular diamond pea is we'll hopefully ask everyone to remove their old files of that, because this is the one, so we'll get a consistent one across the board, it's on our baseball field, our football field, our basketball courts, and people that aren't in love with, yet, with the dragon will continue to use the diamond pea as much, and then as the dragon becomes cooler to them, then they can dabble in that, go ahead. Give me a few examples of what it might look like on things, you put it on a helmet, or put it on a shirt, in some different ways, or put it on a hat and a T-shirt, this is just some examples of how you would put the branding up there, so we're excited to get this stuff in the process completed and begin implementing, implementing a unified brand for Pickens Athletics and Pickens schools in general as much as it wants to be in place. Questions that you guys might have?
Bless your heart, this is a difficult decision.
It was ours.
Yeah, get a lot of input, I'm sure.
For the press who can't see this, I will describe, we saw images of dragon mascot logo, and they're very shelling. And everybody will see them soon.
Yes, very soon. We're wanting to tell, show our coaches and athletes as well, but after you guys.
So Thomas, like, so if there's a local vendor who wants to reproduce Spiritware, will they get the file that's got the font and the...
So it's all consistent, it's all one thing, all right? So we're making sure the same thing is going out to the vendors, that way one consistent is coming out of the vendors. As you see, a lot of people don't realize, we have two different diamond peas around here, right? Subtle details, right, those subtle changes, so we'll be able to give them to, as Dr., or Mr. Thomas said, we'll be able to give them all the different files, the JPGs, the vector files and everything.
There'll be a PNG, a JPEG, a W Illustrator file, ESP file, if we could really share the whole branding guide with any vendors that want to make things consistent.
So it'll be a full branding guide that you just...
We have a full branding guide that's maybe, yeah, in a PDF format.
With our own trademark.
It is got trademark on it, it's kind of informally trademarked through, because it is original work, it's not a copy from someone else, if you went and searched for dragons, you will not find that one, I've looked thousands.
I think that's understatement.
Yeah, but it's informally trademarked through the corporation that worked on it, but if we wanted to pay to trademark it legally ourselves, then we could, we'll have full ownership in that way, but yeah, but it'll have the trademark logos emblem on it when it, when it's a part of the package that comes out.
To deter the Walgreens random thing that gets put in the back corner shelf by the pharmacy, right? We see some of those things that just aren't in unison with what we have and what our brand is.
With that faded lime green.
Right, right.
And the green's one of the hardest aspects of all of this, is to get a consistent green, which is, we're just, we're going to have to continue to work at it, this is the first step, and then getting application through our teams to do it consistently, we'll get the next step. Any other questions?
Yeah, there's years I've, well, juggling state or slightly older than me, that can remember how many different dragons that we've seen, comes up in open years, 100, different colors of green, dang near black taking over our uniforms in every sport, we've seen a lot.
If one of the teams decides they want to have some article clothing and have all this on it, or have something with Pickens on it, do they need to, what's the process for them to get it approved? Do they need to go through you?
We're going to work through that process, but I think early it's going to be a lot of check-in, check-in at that administrative level, or we've got another coach that's pretty adept, but this is going to help with implementation, he's really good with the digital side of things, so we're going to help them, assist them, because I've been talking with our coaches, they're going to want to get it right, so, but that's the beauty of the file, is the file pretty much has it, has it needs to be, so as long as we're using that file in that format, it'll come out the same way.
Mr. Gartral, I think you made, alluded to one point, it was very familiar to me when I came here over a year ago, that the tradition is rich in Kelly green and white, and so I think if you notice with what we've done, we've tried to stay true to the roots of that Kelly green and white.
And I can remember several years ago, which, you know, I thought was all the heavy black accents in uniforms, it looked nice at the time, but I had some of the older pink, my parents' generation, and now you know we're green and white, don't you? We're not black, with a touch of green, a little bit of white, we're green and white.
I can speak to that personally, as the basketball coach previously, that we had green and white uniforms all the time, and we did get a black set, and I really appreciated the kids' view of that, they were excited to have something a little bit different, but we retained wearing the green because they knew that was what our school is, so green white's the staple, but a splash of black can get them excited.
Well, we've done with black with football very successfully, and it is a nice change going like Notre Dame when they go to the green jerseys, once every five, 10 years.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Combs and Mr. Thomas, because this was a, this is a big task, and I think, no matter your point, Mr. Combs, I think Mr. Combs told me he'd seen like 22 different dragon designs.
I must have seen 100.
You know, so that was, but it's really important for us to try to align this, and so I appreciate the work in the area that you've done with this.
Thank you very much.
I think it almost says, we are one, and I like that.
I agree. Okay, at this time, we'll turn it over to our Director of Student Services, Mr. Corey Thompson. Mr. Thompson is providing us with a student... Thompson. Mr. Thompson is providing us with a student service update after the first month of school. And can we, you know, like on there too?
Dr. Thomas Ford, thank you for letting me speak with you today. I'm excited to be here, excited about the new role. Things are going very well. So thank you for that. I'm excited too, as the former principal of Jasper Middle School, where all of our Hawks, Eagles and Bulldogs become dragons, to have a logo that we can start implementing early on. So that's very exciting. So. So for today, I've got a couple of updates. I want to talk about attendance, enrollment and discipline. So the first slide, you can see our attendance. This is our average daily attendance for August. So it's important to remember that data today is all for the month of August. So here you've got 22, 23, 23, 24 and 24, 25, all the month of August. So you can see there the far right, that those are this year's figures. You can see that we're pretty much the same or have increased our average daily attendance. What's really important here, and I guess you guys know this in the community, we did have quite a few cases of COVID early in the school year for our students, our staff. But even with a lot of student absences based on, on COVID and things like that, our attendance, average daily attendance is up or relatively the same where it was. One thing we always want to do is have 95% or greater. You can see that in all of our schools, except the high school, which dipped slightly, but of course, those students may be more impacted with the COVID numbers. We were at 95% or more, and the district total as a whole is 95.24% this August compared to 94.68 last August. Next slide, we've got the enrollment. This is based on the last day of August for each of the three school years. So again, 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25. You can see here, we have increased in several of our schools from last year. Harmony has gone up, Hill City's gone up in enrollment. Tate is slightly down, which is probably a good thing for Tate as far as spacing goes. Jasper Middle School is down slightly. Pickens Junior High is up, and the high school is down slightly as well. Based on August of 2023, last year, our total enrollment district was 4,011 students. This year, at the end of August, we were at 4,000. So again, very comparable. The next slide I've got is the homeschool and enrollment data. So the homeschool data, the reason that I included this here is these are students in Pickens County. So these figures do not represent kids that transferred to other school districts because parents and families moved. It also does not include any transfers or withdrawal to homeschool that happened over the summer. This is the month of August only. You can see at Harmony, we had zero students, Hill City two, Tate four, JMS three, Junior High one, and then at Pickens High, we had nine. And parentheses there, zero dropouts. So these students withdrew to home study with the Georgia Department of Education. They didn't drop out of school altogether. So for total in our district for the month of August, we had 19 students withdraw to homeschool. And then new enrollments, again, this is just in August. This does not include the summer enrollment or people new to the district. We increased 118 students. Now, we don't anticipate 118 new students every month, but in August, you've got a lot of people who are getting settled. Sometimes you may have, have kids who come into the district and maybe they were used to starting in September, or the, the move occurred within the month of August. So, so these figures are there. But I did want to include that so that it doesn't look as though we're losing 19 students every month. But in this figure, we, we gained 99. Again, we don't anticipate this every single month, but August is one of those big ones. The next slide I've got is the school discipline data comparison. Again, this is just the month of August from last year to this year. So on the left-hand side, you see all office disciplinary referrals or ODRs. The office disciplinary referrals, those are going to be those of level offenses that involve the office. Okay, so minor incidents that occur, they're classroom managed, teachers handle those. Those aren't included here. But what you can see is we are up slightly from last year. As, as a whole, Harmony went up a couple, Hill City went down, Tate went down, JMS is the same, Junior High went up some, as well as the high school. So we did go up in the number of office disciplinary referrals. And on the right, those are the major consequences. So that would be in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, alternative school placement. The one on the right, those consequences are the state reportable. So those are the consequences that we have to report to the state. On the left-hand side, the office disciplinary referrals, those are not all state reportable offenses. So there is kind of a delineation there. But for the consequences to the right, those are based on the numbers to the left. You can see there that of the 175 we've had this month, or last month, 46% of those involved a state reportable ISS, OSS or alternative school. So that leaves 54% were just administrative warning, parent teacher conferences, or admin conferences, those sorts of things. Any questions?
So just because I had this conversation with Mr. Holmes the other day, and I know some of the discipline numbers were up, that he had him.
Go back to that.
Did he, did he talk to you about this? He, he saying, well, anyway, I mean, it may not be a bad, we may be getting more disciplines because we're, we've got more backup from the top down, and so they're reporting more things.
Absolutely.
So it may not be a bad, that's not necessarily a bad thing.
I, I don't necessarily see it as a bad thing because the direction has been for a year or more, or not. That worried about the number of referrals so much as the, the kids will be a discipline. We want the kids to be disciplined and mind and not disrupting the teachers. And, and that's, that speaks to exactly the direction that we thought would be.
And for the last time I spoke to you guys about the code of conduct, and, and we spoke about this, Dr. Thomas, he charged the principals at the first principal meeting that the board will support you as far as discipline goes. So I think from that message, we're seeing more of that. And I think definitely the support from you guys is really helping and showing me some interest.
Let's see how it makes you.
Well, I can tell you from a teacher's perspective, and teachers that I have talked with since I've been retired, at two of the schools in particular, I'll just say that, there's been a change in administrators, and this doesn't include JES, that the change in administration has given the teachers more permission internally to make those office referrals, because I've had teachers tell me in the past with the administrator they had, that it was pointless to send them to the office. They got slapped on the hand and were sent back to the room. And when a student is allowed to tell a teacher, F you, no. And if we have more referrals now, and the students know that we're going to be a, a little more consistent and firmer in our discipline, eventually those office referrals should go back down a little bit.
I agree. And I think it's one of those things too, with the other students within the district, you know, they are appreciative that there's some stronger things there as well. So yeah, I think with the support of you guys, I think that leads to some of these changes in the numbers.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Well, we can't teach students until we get their behaviors under control, so this is the positive thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then our fourth goal area is organizational and operational effectiveness. We have a few items under this one. And I'm going to have Martha kind of help me on this. So by the end of September, we need to submit to GSBA, the Georgia School Boards Association, our board training. Okay, and, and we have nine hours where required to attend, six individually, and then three for whole group. And so last year, we did have the board attend the GSBA winter conference. The, the very first day was where we knocked out six hours. That is also an option this year, the annual conference. This time is in December. Last, last year it was in the last part of November. Okay, but legal issues is, is one, like it always is. This year's a little different. We've got governance team effectiveness through evaluations. And then we've got from the boardroom to the classroom, understanding governance team's role in impacting student achievement. Those are our three different options for a full day training that will knock out our, our six hours.
Is it in cop again?
It will be, yeah, the same place as last year, the Waverly.
What's that date?
I think it's December the 11th, Wednesday, December the 11th.
Oh.
We got another day over than deeper down.
So do we, do we, do we got a little, we got a little fluctuation with this, with GSBA, right Martha? Just in terms of if we can change?
Yes, yes. They don't let you.
The workshops.
You have to. This year, I'll just send it in again. It actually goes to the DOE.
Okay, DOE. Okay, thank you. All right. So do y'all have preferences?
I do.
Boardroom, the classroom.
Okay, so student achievement or discussion.
Yeah.
Mr. Carter?
I think last year, we, we all just picked the ones we wanted to go to.
Y'all did, safety, we did.
I had to register.
That's right.
I had to register before that.
All right, yeah, okay. When, how soon do we need to do that? Do you do that?
October.
You mean today?
No, October 3rd is the day of open registration.
Oh, okay.
But this is through by the end of September.
Yeah, but planned to do.
Okay.
Amy said from boardroom.
Okay, so we could put down that one for Joe, Amy and Tommy, and then you have a preference, Smithy?
No, not at this time.
Okay, all right. So legal issues, governance team, effectiveness through the evaluation system, and from the boardroom to the classroom.
I think boardroom and classroom is better.
Okay. Okay. And we'll just circle back, Smithy. All right, very good. Okay, and then, yeah, December 11th is that day. And then just the next item on our agenda for goal area four, and Miss Smith is in here too, so we may have her help with this. We had initially discussed our next SLOSS is expected to cap out before the end of 2026, which calls us to have another referendum before it caps out. Okay, and, and so we initially had talked about having a new referendum on the ballot in March of 2025. But when I met with Stacy Guyfrid, if we do it at this time, that referendum is the only thing on the ballot. Okay, so what her recommendation, which I really appreciate, because I did not know this, in, in June of 2025, there is a statewide election for Public Service Commission, June 17. And so if we could piggyback with that, you know, there, there is something already that will happen in June 2025, so we can have our SLOSS referendum on that ballot instead of having a, a special called election just for our SLOSS.
I don't know if it's too accurate. One time I had heard that, that an election costs the county in excess of $20,000.
Right, so we would, if we did it just us, that's, that's a.
That's just.
I agree.
I agree.
Now, that does kind of put us on a different timetable from what, Miss Smith, you had told us, in case it was turned down, we'd have to wait to do it again, so.
What's, what's y'all's projection right now when you think it may, we may hit the cap?
According to, we, we worked with a group that handles this, and they do this, and they set trends, and they, they know some additional information across the state that we do not. And they are predicting that we would cap out probably in March of 26.
Okay.
But now you could go February or April. I mean, you could go either way, a month or two, you know, barring a some massive event happening. So the way it works is if we, if we have the election in June.
And it fails.
And it fails.
We have to wait.
We cannot put it on the ballot again for one year. So we would not be able to go back until June of 26.
And when those are voted up, do they immediately take effect? What's the, is there a delay?
No. When we, when you cap out, the way it works, as far as I know, unless there's been any change that I, I'm not aware of, say, we, we have a set amount, that once we collect that amount, you are actually allowed to collect through the end of that quarter. So we could, say it capped out in January, we would still be able to collect funds through March. But now, say it was March, then you're done, whatever. When you hit that mark, whatever you.
That's good to know. My other question was, when, like, if it's on the ballot in June, it's voted in, how soon does the movement take effect? Is that immediate, or is there a delay in time?
When the old one counts.
Yeah, but when, but if you have gaps, say it capped out.
That's why I'm worried about the gap.
I know that there is a, I believe it is a 30-day, then it would take us at least 30 days to begin to recognize that. But I'll, I'll check on that for sure and let you know, because it's been a few years since we've done this. So, and we've, we've never lost one. We've never had it not pass.
I still think, yeah, I, I would say we, we should put it on there in June with the other thing.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think it'd be very wasteful.
We'll confirm that.
Wasteful to do.
Okay, well, that's what we're planning to do, and we'll continue our conversation. Miss Smith, about that as well. All right, very good. Thank you. Couple other topics under this goal area. Just a reminder on our October dates. We do have a board retreat scheduled for Friday, October the 4th, be at 1 o'clock. It's going to be at our library. And so we will get more information on that as it gets closer. I just wanted to, I guess, solidify the, the location. We'll have that at the.
Jasper Library.
Jasper Library, isn't it? And then one other thing I want to mention about October, on the, the following week, that's October the 11th, that is our first conference day. Okay, we did this in our schedule, our calendar last year. A lot of elementary teachers have requested the possibility of having conferences for our parents that day. What I'd like to propose, and we can still, as we get closer, we will solidify this, but in an effort to help our parents, I'd, I'd like to possibly entertain the idea that, that we have conferences that evening on that Thursday for parents who are working on Friday. And then we also have conferences Friday up until lunchtime. That way, we can have an opportunity for our parents to attend those conferences. And, and since our teachers would be working extra hours on that Thursday, we would, we would let them leave at lunchtime on that Friday. But that would at least be more accommodating, I feel like, for our parents.
I like that.
I like that.
I think that's a good idea.
I like that.
Okay, all right, okay. And then the last item I have is just our, our consent agenda for next Thursday. So bear with me, it's pretty lengthy. We do have financial reports that we will be approving. We will also formally approve our local board training plan that Ms. Parker, sorry, that we just talked about. We've got our CTA local plan that Ms. Parker talked about, we'll approve that. We will approve our MOU with Good Samaritan. That, that is another, another source of student, like mental health. We've got Highland Rivers, we've got Georgia Hope. Now, we've got Good Sam coming on board with us too. We will approve the MOU with Dalton State, MOU with ABAC, MOUs with the University of North Georgia. We will approve our out-of-state overnight trips. We've got a, the Travel Club at the high school was going to DC at the end of the school year. And then we've got our FFA poultry team going to Arkansas in October, so we'll be approving those. And then we'll approve the minutes in August, as well as the minutes from today. And then we'll also approve a surplus. We've got some printers from JMS, some network switches and monitors. So that will be on our consent agenda for Thursday night.
Mr. Charles, I'll have, okay. All right. Item five, which is what we amended to. At this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, to discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, authorize, ordering and appraisal related to acquisition or disposal of real estate entering into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, subject to approval in a subsequent public vote, or entering into an option to purchase, dispose of, or lease real estate, subject to approval in a subsequent public vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on favor, 5-0. Okay, we are adjourned to executive session at 1:51 PM.